Welcome, everybody, to our City Council Port Authority Concurrent Meeting, Monday, July 31st, 2023. I'd like to call the City Council portion of this meeting to order.
And I would like to call the Port Authority, Portion, to order.
And thanks, everybody, for being here. We've got a good group, especially a good group in the House here. So, welcome to everybody. Looking forward to the presentations tonight. Remind everybody around the table that in order to speak, you have to push the button and the green light's got to come on, on the microphone in front of you. And then after you're done speaking, if you could turn it off again, it cuts down on the background chatter and makes it a little bit cleaner on the recording and for the folks watching. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of minutes. And we'll ask the City Council, are there any questions or additions or subtractions to the minute this evening? If not, council, I would look for a motion to approve the December 7th, 2022, Council Port Authority Concurrent Meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. And a motion by Councilmember Don Lysandro, second by Councilmember Martin, to approve the minutes from December 7th, 2022. No further City Council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero.
And I would like to entertain a similar motion for the Port Authority.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Peterson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hunt. Any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries five zero. And maybe six zero with Rob here.
Second item on our agenda is organizational business, and we've got a presentation regarding our Small Business Development Center, excuse me, Small Business Center. And Carla Henderson and Barb Wolf are here to kick us off. And I know we've got some exciting news and looking forward to seeing what the updates are on this. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, Councilmembers and Commissioners. It's been about seven months since we've been before you, and there has been a lot of work that has happened. And so, we were sitting around and this concurrent meeting came up, and I thought, this is a great time for us to come up here and share our work and bring some friends along, because we've got a lot to share. So, can you get over to Barb?
Yes, so when we were here last before, in December, one thing that I want to address, I came before you in special projects and initiatives, and now I'm in the Port Authority, so focusing my work with the business community. I think a lot of what we're going to talk about will come up in the slides later on, so I'll give those updates at a later point. But with that, I would like to introduce Fran DiCaprio from Formula, who is our lead architect on this project.
Good evening, Mr. DiCaprio. Welcome.
Hello. Yeah, I'm Fran DiCaprio. I'm a designer at Formula, and I'm actually stepping in for Paula Sanchez, who is out of town. She's been the project manager for this. So, I'm coming in a little last minute to, you know, present our work for you today. So, Formula is led by Nathan and James, and, you know, Paula has been managing this project. This is a list of some of our collaborators. I think for now, I can just hand it over to Alliance to talk about the interior work that they've been doing for the project.
Good evening, and welcome. Good to see you again.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
I'll just maybe follow up a little bit. I'm Julie McLeod with Alliance, and this is Greta Froster with Alliance, and we are partnered with Formula Architects, kind of a joint design venture. Together, we're both architectural firms, and Greta and I and our team have been working closely with the, on the interior portions of the building. And so, we're going to start off with a little introduction to the ideas behind the building, once we find our slide.
Okay, exciting. That was a suspenseful moment here. Well, thank you for letting us join you. Like Julie said, we are really excited to share this project with you. We worked with the Advisory Committee several times, and what continued to resonate with us was this connection to the existing fire station, right, and really appreciating what that meant. And so, as we were building our concept and going through these meetings and talking about what this space was going to become, we reflected on the importance of a fire station in the community. It's foundational, right? It's iconic. It's recognizable. And so, what does that translate into the future? And looking at the Small Business Center as the future to support the community and local Bloomington residents, it seemed like there was a strong connection between fire department, fire station, and supporting a community, and the Small Business Center.
So, what you can see, very small on the screen, is the building outline. And what's really wonderful about this building is that it's, it used to house vehicles, and so it was very large, open interior, and the vehicles drove in one side and out the other, and so there were a lot of openings. And we felt like, hearing what the Advisory Committee was interested in, it really gave this opportunity to really open the building up, both to connect with the community, but also to kind of expand the available space. I think very quickly we discovered that we had maybe twice as many ideas as we could fit inside the building. And so, by allowing this building to be really open, to maximize that open quality of the building as it stands today, we had this opportunity to really kind of expand the program inside and out, even though this is Minnesota, and we know that sometimes the weather does not cooperate. So, generally, we kept a core of plumbing kinds of features, the restrooms, where the plumbing was in the building today, and kind of off to the side, and then really allowed the central portions of the building to open up and house different programs. And the plan that you see up in the upper part, it looks like it's a series of rooms, and there is the opportunity to enclose it as a room, but you can actually move those walls. So, the idea is to be able to move the walls and open up that space. So, you can make a small classroom, you can make a large classroom, or you can make one really large space that's capable of gathering groups of people together. And then, in the third bay or the western side of the building, are smaller spaces for incubator studios, one-on-one work, small huddle rooms, you know, so really trying to provide a range of opportunities, a range of activities that could happen in the building, and allow that to change over the course of the day. So, rooms that are used for a classroom in the morning could be used for a studio space in the afternoon. And so, really trying to maximize the use of that space. So, generally speaking, it's a big, open palette of opportunities within the building, with some supporting spaces, including a work cafe, and restrooms, and showers. So, Greg's going to tell us a little bit more about really the, kind of the fun part of the building.
Sure. So, this is like a co-working space. I mean, many of you may have, you know, set up shop there. And so, when we were looking at, the next slide shows some of those inspiration images. And what we liked about this is, you know, these are precedent images, talking about the character of space that this co-working space can become. We know it's an industrial building, right? And so, how do we preserve that and enhance it? So, you'll notice kind of that open plan, open concept, exposed fixtures. So, we're thinking about that in this space. We also, like, as Julie said, that openness and that connection to daylight. It's really important as humans and as we work to be exposed to good daylight. So, we've got plenty of opportunity. Another thing that I think these images really show, and what we did in the space, was to focus on color, and kind of a way of wayfinding or identifying spaces, creating privacy, also presenting kind of social cues to what behavior is expected. So, on the earlier plan, we saw kind of a quiet workspace, and then we've got a very open collaborative work zone. So, those colors are a little bit more vibrant, a little bit more active, and when you go into that quiet space, they're a little bit more subdued in the materials. We also like the vibrancy of the color. That, to us and the Advisory Committee, really represents the city of Bloomington, and so we wanted to embrace that. And so, that's, you know, one of those kind of inspiration points was that, those primary colors found in that first slide that I talked about around the fire station. If you advance to the next slide, you'll see those, kind of the palette. So, introducing texture and pattern and color in deliberate ways to help kind of, for people to understand, you know, where quiet is found, where active is found, to engage. Also, a real opportunity within this building for the community to present art. And we've got a couple places where rotating exhibits will be housed. We also are really focusing on kind of the identity of the space and the interest of the space. So, City of Bloomington is working hard to do that as well. And you'll see that the materiality is pretty simple. I think that was intentional as well. We want the space and the people inside it to engage it and to be active.
And that the space could really be both a studio or a production kind of, or, you know, a development kind of space, but it also can become that showcase to share the things that the members are producing or creating within that space. So, it really can flex between those two functions as well. Fran's going to take over and talk more about the exterior portion of the building.
Okay, I brought some samples from our office. I keep turning around to see what I'm actually looking at on the screen here. But on the screen, there's a sample of some metal panels that we've been looking at for the project. So, if you're familiar with the existing building, you know, currently, there's just kind of like this continuous brick material on all sides, and so we've been exploring ways to, you know, not do too many radical changes, but kind of take what we have there and add a new dimension to it. So, one thing we've been exploring is these perforated metal panels that Formula has used on many other projects. And there's a lot of opportunities that come from that. So, there's, it can come in a variety of colors, and you'll see what we have in some of the renders, what we've gone with so far, as well as a variety of like perforation. So, these are some samples from BACH Metals, of just some things that we were looking at. And so, there are some standard patterns that you can see here, but then there's also potential to do some custom stuff. And it becomes, like, the panels become an art opportunity that can go on all sides of the building. And we're particularly looking to incorporate it onto the front face of the building. We got some renders coming up, but you can kind of see what these look like. And they're, they have a very clean aesthetic, also very easy to maintain when they're installed. So, hopefully, it'll be a good fit for the project. Am I in control here? Next slide.
Advance with that one.
Okay, thank you. So, this is some previous work by Formula. So, it's Juxtaposition Arts, a new art center in Minneapolis, and this just got its grand opening this weekend. There was a great party that we were able to attend, and Justice is very happy. I mean, Justice, you know, you're probably aware, they're doing engagement work for this project. So, you can see in these images what I was talking about with those perforated metal panels, and how we have these red panels on that project, and they become, you know, this art opportunity. So, Roger Cummings, one of the main guys at Juxtaposition, designed this continuous pattern that runs along the front and side of the building. And so, there's a potential to, you know, engaging artists to do similar work for this project. And then you can also see on Great River Landing, so the inside of that, of where that entrance is, is also a similar metal panel that became an art opportunity. And then you can also see the incorporation of LEDs in this project. They're also on Juxtaposition Arts, although these photos aren't showing that LED integration, but it becomes this beacon, essentially turns the building into a beacon that can attract people, light up at night, and become just a real, you know, icon in that neighborhood, right? So, these are some renders from the project. And so, you can see the white material that we have on the front is that perforated metal panel. It's hard to see at this resolution, but you can see how that, it can get overlaid directly onto the brick, and it provides this interesting screen and creates a nice texture, right? The other material that you'll see highlighted is, it looks kind of gray on the screen, but it's a blue metal panel. And so, this is like a sample of that in a different color. What we're looking at is bicentria. They make these metal panels. And so, it would go over the building. Currently, where like the roof is on the building, so we'd be removing that roof and then attaching this, this blue metal panel that wraps around the building. And the metal panel, and this panel can also become, it can serve two purposes. So, on the west face of the building, there's like a sort of parking area, and by, see, it can be painted over, or graphics can be applied onto this metal panel, so there can be a sort of wayfinding on that face of the building, because if you're parking, we want to make sure that people know where the entrance is, so there can be opportunity to have graphics to direct people to the entrance, as well as potentially an art opportunity. So, that's been discussed in some meetings of, there's different ways it can be done, but either a vinyl, applied graphic, or paint could be done onto a panel like this to create an exterior art opportunity. A few final things to call out is, so you can see on that main, on the south face of the building, where we have these large doors from the fire station, we're looking at incorporating these folding docking, a docking door system. We've explored, there's a couple products that can serve that purpose, but it'd be a collapsible door that can basically open up the space, and it can, you know, create this, you know, transparency, or like a porous, you know, dividing the wall between the exterior and the interior. And in doing so, it can really activate that front patio space that we're creating in this building, where it can be a place for, you know, whether it's just like casually meeting, or having lunch, or having larger gatherings. And because it's in the front and the back, you can imagine situations, where they're permitting, where those doors opens up, and you have like a clear view through the building, and it creates, you know, just a sense of like this, this open volume that connects the entirety of the site, right? And I believe there's incorporation of a similar kind of wall in the, in some of the meeting spaces inside that you may have seen on that plan that Alliance was talking through earlier. Finally, yeah, just the LEDs. You can start to see how that's being integrated on that canopy in front. So, that'd be a custom canopy that we'll, that we're gonna, that we've already designed, we have to finish detailing. And they can connect to some of these stairs that are along that west face of the building, where, again, we want to, you know, make sure there's clear wayfinding for people arriving at the site and entering to the front or to the back. And so, LED integration can happen there to bring people into those gathering spaces. So, I believe that's it for me. We can pass it over to Pat O'Neill to talk through a, what we're looking at for the skylights.
Good evening, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I got a few show and tell items. So, my name's Pat O'Neill. I'm with Daylight Specialists. We're a top-down daylighting company, and when I say that, it's, our main focus is, is skylights, okay? Now, whether that be a traditional skylight, glass, or plastic, or fiberglass sandwich panel, or a hybrid skylight, which we will be talking about today, and that is a tubular daylight device. How many people in here have ever heard of a Solotube? A lot of people. Okay, this is great. So, it's Solotube Residential, much larger, okay? So, we're going to focus on that. Our main brands that we use for skylights are V-Lux, Sun Optics, and of course, Solotube, which we'll talk about tonight. Before we get much further, I'd like to just, I can go to the slide here. Now, people, a few people have mentioned daylight, and it's really important, especially in today's design and design standards. So, let's just focus on that for one second, because it's really, really critical in the way you deliver daylight, and that's the difference between a hybrid skylight and a traditional skylight. Traditional skylight diffuses or spreads the light into the room at a much higher level, at the maybe roof level or slightly above. Tubular daylighting device harnesses that, drives it down a pipe, and then diffuses it or delivers it much deeper into the space. So, daylight is really important, and tubular daylighting devices, TDDs, as I'll refer to them time to time, allow in the 400 to 700 nanometers of the visible light spectrum, and that is the full spectrum lighting that we can see, the colors of the rainbow, right? We're blocking out the ultraviolet, 400, 3D, 400 nanometers and lower, and then the infrared, so the heat. And that little block of light is the light that affects our circadian rhythm, which determine our sleep cycle, immune system functionality, and our growth and development. Very important there. Now, within that 400 to 700 nanometers, a lot of people aren't aware that melatonin, a hormone produced by the body, is suppressed around 460. So, when your body gets that nice dose of daylight, the serotonin, which is another hormone produced by the body, starts kicking in, and that gets the production of our neurotransmitters going, and that affects our moods, our natural thought processes, and our ability to learn and retain information. And it's great for schools, offices, boardrooms, whatever it may be. How did we advance to the next slide? I'm not quite sure how that happened. So, I was just going to show on the previous slide, we do have, these tubes also do allow in the proper daylight to accommodate plant life. So, if somebody sets a plant underneath it, they're able to sustain that plant life. Oh, it went back. There it is, right there. Yeah. I didn't touch it. Okay. So, if anybody's ever been in the Emery Hotel in downtown Minneapolis, it's a bi-flick design. It's, it's kind of a one-of-a-kind design that's daylight with tropical plants in the middle of downtown Minneapolis, so it's kind of neat. So, let's talk about tubular daylighting devices. So, what we do is, we harness daylight up on the roof, and this dome right here is a 21-inch dome, and this is what we're looking at for the majority of the tubes in this project. It uses a Fresnel lens designed, Fresnel lens invented for the lighthouse, harvest in daylight and direct daylight in a single pattern, okay? So, here, we're harvesting daylight in the morning, in the evening hours, harvesting and driving it down in the tube while rejecting the high-intensity daylight. So, it's a much more controlled daylight than a traditional skylight. Once we get it into the tubing, we transfer it through a rigid tubing at a 90, 99.7% rate with a color rendition rate, so we're actually not having any color shifts of close to 100 as well. Once we get it down to the bottom, we're gonna, the real important part is, how do we let the light loose into the room or diffuse it? So, either we're going to use like a broad spectrum or tighter collimated beam to drive the light down. This is the big difference between traditional skylight and hybrid skylight. Target the daylight down to its intended target. So, is it okay if I walk around here?
Sure. If I could just add, Pat, there are 10 skylights already in the fire station. They're covered up. So, as he's explaining this, we already have the skylights. This would just be added. We're not going to replace them with skylights, but actually use this product. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
So, here I have, and it's, and I'll move this around, but here we have three different diffusers, and it would look just like any other light fixture you look up, and you'd see a lens covering it, okay? So, everybody can see the translucency of these are a little bit different. So, that's how we diffuse the light in the space. So, just imagine, these are three separate rooms here, okay? This first one here, I'm going to have a more collimated beam, okay? So, it's going to be a tighter van that drives the light deeper in the space, okay? This one here is going to be a little bit wider, so it's going to broadcast all over the room, but let the walls reflect into some other objects like space. And then this one here is a super wide, so maybe you have a small office, a corridor, or a bathroom that you're looking to do. So, it's very important versus the traditional skylight, we're able to control that down to its intended target. Now, if we go to the last slide here, we can kind of see a few examples. There we go. Of some different applications. In the upper left, we have a fire station. Though I know we do have a larger shaft that we are looking to replace one of those skylights in there. And that would be a product that we use on the upper left in that example. And that one just has a more collimated beam. It's a much larger tube. It's 29 inches, so it's going to produce a lot more daylight, but it's going to drive it deeper into the space. The second example over in the middle there on the top, that one there at Jackson Gray is exactly what we're looking and proposing for this project, along with the one on the lower left at the Quality Bicycle Products. And then I just threw a couple others in here. For example, on the McCray School, there is actually a single-source light. So, that one has a high-efficiency LED in it, as well as natural daylight. So, both are coming out of the same product. And then, a couple different examples on other municipal projects. If anybody wants to see the dome, I do. It's kind of neat to see the laser reflect the light back down, show what its optics do. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alejandra Polinka, Director of Creative Placemaking, and I wanted to touch a little bit more on some of the art opportunities for the building. So, the Creative Placemaking Commission is really excited to continue our support of the Small Business Center, both in the physical space and in future programming. And so, expanding the capacity of local artists and supporting the arts and culture sector within Bloomington is really an important part of our creative placemaking work. So, we have worked with Alliance to identify various opportunities, both on the exterior of the building, in the outside space, and within the building as well. And these art components will really help foster a more creative, inspiring... And these art components will really help foster a more creative, inspiring, welcoming, and unique, unique place to work, and it will also provide job opportunities for local artist entrepreneurs. So some of the external art opportunities have been touched on today, such as custom design on those perforated screens. We're also planning on having pad displays for exterior sculptures, mural on the building, maybe art embedded into the patio flooring, that could be tile or painted surface, or vinyl graphics applied to exterior panels. Some of the internal art opportunities, and that's what you're seeing on the screen here, could be entry art, and so that could maybe wrap from the exterior of the building into the vestibule area, which would create a really welcoming atmosphere, but also just highlight the main entrance of the building. Murals or a picture rail for rotating art displays, display cases either for art or maybe for products that are being designed or created with, for users within the space. Sculptural piece or mural in the tower room. And we also in general just talked about maybe incorporating some of the old used equipment from the fire station as part of the art projects to just honor the history of the building. So we're currently working on prioritizing the art projects so that they align with the construction timeline, and we anticipate there to be several phases in implementing this work. And I think there's a benefit in having phases, because we can consult with future users of the space to identify what they'd like to see in the building, and so that they can also have some ownership in maybe selecting future art projects or artists. It also allows us just to get a better grasp on how the space is being used, once it's built and people are actually inside of it. So once we have priority projects identified for 2024, we'll start right away in fine-tuning the scope of work and proceed with the artist selection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ollie. Does anybody know where the power button is on this? No? Okay. Apologize for looking behind, but some of the update for what we've been doing surrounding community engagement since we were here last in December. Of course, we continued with our advisory committee, and so our advisory committee met for 10 meetings. We concluded that work in April earlier this year. We really using advisory committee that you heard earlier from Alliance to really inform what that space looks like. And back in April, we had quite a party, and so the mayor was there, and we also had Hennepin County Commissioner Gotal, and also council member Martin, and the project team, and a whole bunch of people, just to have a party and celebrate the work that they did, because it was really a lot of work. Then we also presented Carla and myself to the Multicultural Advisory Committee out of our own police department, public health, and also creative place-making. Earlier in June, we were at the farmer's market, so one of the subconsultants with our team is Juxtaposition Arts, and so they really assisted in our engagement activities that we performed. And it was also really important that we engage youth, so that is one of our priority groups. Just as a reminder, it's BIPOC-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, youth, and artists. And so we engaged a number of youth from Blooming Meadows, which is an apartment building adjacent to this business center. And they assisted us at all of our events so far, and they'll also be there this weekend as well. So at the farmer's market, one of the things that we did is, we asked, if you were to create a small business, what would it be? And then we had that recorded on the cardboard discs that you see in the picture here. And we also had characters. That, that definitely was a different activity for our crowd at the farmer's market, and people were a little hesitant to do it, but we got a number of people to participate and give us our ideas. So that was a lot of fun, you'll see a picture here. Another thing that we did, that you see some of those objects there that the folks are using at the workshops, we had one at Blooming Meadows, and then we also had one that was actually at the fire station. So what we used there is an inclusive sensory-based activity. This originated by James Roehouse, who is a well-known urban planner, community activist, and artist. And really what we did with this activity is to cross that language barrier. And so what people were asked to do is to design something that they enjoy in their community, whether that was as a child, in a different community than ours, but what does that look like and what would they like to have in the new business center? So that's... Afraid to almost push us. This is a temporary art installation that's out at the fire station currently. So it went up as colorful, and it was designed by youth out of Juxtaposition Arts, again, using youth as part of this project. And so it was put up, and then after they participated at the farmer's market in the workshop at Blooming Meadows, it was really fun to see that they took the responses on those cardboard discs, and the people that were at the workshop were actually able to go there after the event and see their ideas on there. So the, the students were the artists for this and put that up there. You'll see on the left, that's Harmony Harrison, she's a young artist that participated, and then the attend, a couple of the attendees that were at the Saturday workshop at the fire station. So we do have an open house that's happening this Saturday from 11 to 2, and we're going to have a number of activities there. We will have a working fire truck with firefighters, so encouraging the kids to get on the fire truck. We'll also have an ice cream cart to enjoy free ice cream and balloon animals. We will also have a project team and employees there to talk through the renderings and what the space is meant to be. We're also going to have an artist there, Papa Embay, and he's a co-founder of the ITS Festival, which is an annual festival that allows for Black-owned spaces that spark purpose and create positive life experiences for the BIPOC communities. And as he's creating this music with the input from the participants, he'll do a final recording for us that will be part of this project that people can listen to. And Jeff, welcome, Jeff.
Thank you so much, Barb. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, distinguished members of the City Council and commissioners and dedicated city employees. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present this evening. My name is Jeff Aggie, and I'm the founder and CEO of 2043 SBC, and the City of Bloomington Project is the only project that I personally work on, so it's very important and special to me. Now before I started my own business in 2012, I was a church kid who grew up in the church. We had this interesting concept that if you build it, they will come. And so folks just built bigger churches, but unfortunately, churches got emptier and emptier. Next year's project that will come up in 2024, hopefully in the fall, is an amazing project. You've heard about how amazing the building is, the interior, the exterior, but it only matters if the target audience that we're looking for views it as their home. One of the things that struck me in my first opportunity with working with the city is, I didn't know that there was a city office that had a art, almost a museum, really a museum. Has anyone ever seen a city building that has a museum? Alrighty. For the record, there are no hands up at this moment. Has anyone been to a city hall that has a pond that has a promenade in the back of it? One person, we have one person. The beauty of this city is in the folks who work with it, but also in the building that exists that a number of people have no idea that exists. I didn't know it existed until I began to consult with the City of Bloomington. And so what will, what you'll see here is more than just the concept of if you build it, they will come, it's the design-thinking principles that we have to build whatever we're building with our end-users in mind. And so before we even have a building, before we even have a space, we are going to create space here that always existed and that's always been for the constituents, that's always been a remarkable place that people want to be, we're just going to cultivate it even more for the small business community. Mary Bussey oftentimes uses a, the analogy of a garden, and you know, if we're thinking about the next year's project as it opens being a tree that's planted, or the harvest, what we'll be doing between now and then is really cultivating that ground. And what it looks like is bringing stakeholders as well as our, the small business owners, youth, women, BIPOC owners, really all business owners. Really, when we say those terms together, they just mean a space where everyone is welcome. We are going to start doing that right here at the Plaza, a very beautiful place that folks will begin to, they already have, folks already have a relationship with the city, but this will be a place where they feel like it's theirs. So by the time a new building opens, they already have that relationship with the city. And I'm not saying that they don't have that relationship yet, but one thing that struck us was during our engagement with the community, there's a former business owner here, he's owned a business for the last 30 years, and he said, prior to this committee, I had an adversarial relationship with the city. It felt like the small business community had an adversary. He said, you know, this experience has completely changed my view and how I view the city. Sometimes perception is reality, and what we'll be doing here is not only changing perception, but creating value for people. So coming to the city will be a value add that they see, so that as we transition a folks over to the Small Business Development Center, they'll have that same experience that they have right here at City Hall. And so here are a couple of things that we'll be doing between now and the winter. Next slide, I'm not sure if you're seeing it. So here are a couple of things that we'll be doing between the fall and the winter. The first thing is a venture night at the Plaza, at the end of October, early November. So imagine it's not, hopefully it's not snowing, it's, you know, getting cool, and there's a beautiful venture night here at the Plaza. And what that venture night will do is, it will bring stakeholders together, as well as small business owners, as well as artists, as well as young people, in this wonderful space that we have, where they can receive the services that they're looking for, they can connect with one another, and hopefully, you'll be invited, they can connect with the folks who work hard every day to make this city what it is. And in doing so, it will continue to kick off for next year, what will be the continuous process of bringing community into space. But even before we get into that venture night that brings stakeholders together, so you might think about a, a partner who might be a sponsor, you might think about a partner who might be bringing services, and as well as the people who are receiving their services, before then, we wanna have workshops right here at the Black Box Theater. The Black Box Theater is a wonderful resource. I'm the kind of person who truly believes that the City of Bloomington in general is an underutilized resource that people don't see, but especially the Black Box, using the Black Box to have seminars. So as we're thinking about youth, women-owned businesses, BIPOC businesses, to begin to have seminars there in September, in August and September, so folks are actually receiving training. One of the benefits of working with 2043 and working with the folks at the Small Business Center that's coming up and working with community development, is as we're bringing all those partners together, we have the best of the best people that will be willing to do seminars for the kind of entrepreneurs and the kind of small businesses that we're looking for, for free. So these are seminars that could be up to $1,500 that they would have to pay for, but there'd be no tuition, because it's being done here in partnership with the city. So folks are immediately getting that kind of value. So they're getting that kind of value, they're getting that kind of training, which will lead up into our big venture night at the Plaza. Alrighty. So lastly, when we build it, they will come, because they've already been coming. All we're doing is changing an address. Thank you.
Okay. So we've been a little busy. Barb's gonna talk about kind of our timeline. I know Commissioner Peterson wanted us to move it up six months, but we're trying.
So we're, we're at the point right now where the construction documents were at 60%, and so we have applied for a building permit. So we're working through the process so that we can do city approvals as we're still building it out, so that will cut down on the change orders once we're actually under construction. So we're working on those construction documents right now, we expect to be at 90% on August 24th, and go out to bid for a general contractor in, end of September, beginning of October, kinda looking at the timeframe that we're going to start building in the spring. We've talked this through, we could probably start earlier, but there's no sense, the construction timeline is six months, and so there's no sense in starting yet this winter, so we'd do that in the spring. And then our opening would be late 2024, as many of you know, we have a number of grant funds that we have to use by the end of 2024. So talking to purchasing and also to our Public Works folks, that, that timeline works good to get on the docket of general contractors for first thing in the spring, so getting that out in October.
All right, so the next slide is our money slide. Barb's been excellent at going out and getting funds, particularly from Hennepin County. We did, I don't wanna say shake down the HRA for half a million dollars, but we will be coming to the port. Holly's aware that, you know, she might have some unspent funds, and so you'll be looking for that. We did have a million-dollar congressional directed spending request. We did get an email today that we are not gonna be funded. We have put this on our, tell me, Mike, again, no priority for bonding.
2024 bonding requests from the state legislature.
Yes. The other thing that, because we, we're really, I don't wanna say shaking people down, but Lori Conami Scholler, I said, you know, US Bank, like, that's, they hold a lot of our money. And so I said, who's our relationship person? So Lori sent an email, introduced me. We have put out requests that we would like our financial institution to help support this as a grant. And so we have a couple other, I don't wanna say tricks up our sleeve, but we have some other venues that we're gonna be pursuing, but I just wanna let you know, I think we've raised two and a half, two million, some, give her...
One and a half million, but a little additional, yeah. Close to two million with, with art funds from Creative Place Making as well.
Yes. So we'll be looking to the port, Mr. President, and, and anybody who has some suggestions, but I'm pretty confident we're gonna be all right. And our final slide, oh, the one thing I thought, Barb, maybe you could touch on, is our relationship with Public Works and how other city departments have stepped up and said, hey, we have a road construction project, why don't you, you know, like, time it so that we're not digging in the road one, more than once? Maybe talk a little bit about that collaboration.
Right. So working with Darren Rezak in, in Public Works, there's an 86th Street overlay happening this summer, and so as part of that work, some of the upgrades that we need to the Small Business Center to house people, some of that work is being paid for through this project up to the building. So that's saving us some costs there. Also keeping in, in close contact, because as you may or may not have been over there here recently, there is work happening right now by utilities, and that is CenterPoint. So being in close contact with Public Works, who's in contact with CenterPoint, to make sure that that project is accomplished in front of the fire station by Friday this week in preparation of our open house. There's that, and then also working with Public Works, Deb Williams, she works on some of our larger projects, she's been working on the fire stations, on the construction of that, and having them as a partner when we started getting down to more of the nitty-gritty on the construction. And so her and her team have a process, so when we do the invoices for the billing, they have a whole process on how we move this forward. So they'll be stepping up to take the lead. Also our Building and Inspections Department, working with a general contractor, we can have our inspectors out there more often to have eyes on the project as well, so.
Maybe you mentioned the help we got from planning, in terms of kind of advising us on some of the things that may, that don't trigger, getting a variance.
Yeah, thinking, thinking outside of the box a little bit, and, and working obviously with our architects on our parking, and what that looks like, and how we can avoid a variance to avoid timeline delay. Also working with Aon as our partner with Blooming Meadows, and working on a shared parking agreement. They've been extremely agreeable to work with, and really want this to be a successful project. As, as Carla has said many times before, at Blooming Meadows, we have built-in clients there, and a lot of them, over 400, and the people that attended the workshop, they were neighbors that were in close vicinity and extremely interested in this project, and very excited and wanna open tomorrow as well. So I, I, I think, I just wanted to comment that having a public So I, I, I think, I just wanted to comment that having a public partner as well as Aon helping us with that parking. And so when we have larger events, additional parking, we could use their parking.
Alright, so with that, we happy to entertain any questions.
Well, thank you. It's a comprehensive look and a lot of detail that I think is, it's interesting and it's very exciting also to look at the, the thought that went into it and the, the possibilities around how the building will look, will act, will feel, will welcome people. It's, it's very exciting to hear, so well done on all of that. Mr. President?
What I'm excited about, I think it's another front door for Bloomington. And what you're trying to do is to say to a lot of people that may be intimidated by coming into this building that this is going to be a very user-friendly space that will get them in and have services and things. So, you know, particularly if you're starting a business or something, you're looking for any help you can get and stuff. So I think that's, that's going to be very good. So we have Port Authority questions or?
Council questions?
Mr. Luntz?
I'm the building guy.
Push your button.
Thank you, your honor. I'm the building guy, just two simple questions. You have a, have you developed, evolved a total budget? And then what's the gross square footage of the building again?
The square footage of the building, the usable space is just slightly under 6,000 square feet.
That's what I, that's what I had in mind, okay.
And this will be a city building maintained by our facilities group from Public Works. And so what we will do is we will be paying the, I don't even know.
Space and occupants.
Thank you, Barb. We'll be paying into that fund and it will be maintained by city staff. And they have been at all of our, just about all of our meetings, the facilities team weighing in on the skylights and so forth and, you know, asking all the questions about maintenance and, and all of that. So they've been part of us.
So is there a gross cost budget goal for the re-adaptive use conversion?
For the construction?
Well, yeah. Get the door open, the patterns, the designs, the art.
I think we're almost at three and a half million, is it?
That'd be total for the project.
Architect.
For the whole entire project.
Thank you.
Alright.
Very good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And look forward to hearing from you again in six months as we get to some next milestones on all of this, so thanks. Next on our agenda are item three, it's our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And somewhat different for a Port Authority meeting, we actually have public hearings. We, I know we've had them in the past, but we don't have them very often at the Port Authority. So we have a couple of public hearings that we're going to get to, but we'll start with item 3.1, and this is a resolution authorizing an application to livable communities demonstration account, transit-oriented development grant. Wait for the doors.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, is, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Is your, is your mic on? Because you were very hard to hear there and I wasn't sure if your mic was on or not.
My mic is indeed on. I might have been a bit far from it, or you might have been a bit too close to the door open as well.
Yeah, it could be, thanks.
Let's see, yep, my mic's on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President. This is actually not a public hearing. This is a little different than we usually do it. But this first item here is, will be a resolution to submit and support a grant application to our LCDA, our Livable Communities Development Account Grant, Transit-Oriented Development. There's kind of two different grants that the Met Council puts out. Normally this would go on your consent agenda, but we thought this would be a good idea to do this and introduce the next item, they're both kind of related. So most, the council should be familiar with this project. They just approved it last week for their entitlements. But for the sake of the Port Authority Commission that's here today, 1801 American is the next phase in our Penn American District. You can see we have the district apartments that opened. This is kind of the continuation of that and was just approved for entitlements just south of South Town here, off of Knox American. It's off of the Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit line there. So you could see those kind of star icons or the station. It's literally adjacent to the station. So that's why they're going after the Transit-Oriented Development Grant. The grant, and I'll keep this short, is supporting density around transit stations. They're trying to connect affordable housing and other economic activity to the transit. And obviously being next door, this is a natural fit for that. And they're also supporting sustainable elements or some kind of elevated approach to the development. So in this case, this project will likely be submitting for stormwater improvements and enhanced landscaping to really kind of tie in that public space that's adjacent to the station area. So pretty straightforward. But I do have a recommended motion. This is for a point of order, this is just the city council that would be approving this. The Port Authority, sorry, maybe next time we'll have you approve. But under our considerations, we thought the city council has more meetings that if we need to get on another agenda later on.
We're really crushed, Mike, that you're not having the Port Authority approve it.
Without entertaining any questions you might have or?
Counsel, any questions regarding this? This one's pretty straightforward, just supporting steward companies, they seek the grant from the Metropolitan Council. If there are no questions, counsel, I would look for a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing application and authorizing the execution of a grant agreement for the Livable Communities Demonstration Account Transit-Oriented Development Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Martin to adopt the resolution authorizing the application. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero, thank you much. Item 3.2.
It's also me, I'm sorry.
We figured.
Try that again, here we go.
Let me just say, that's a pretty rowdy group going to a show tonight, my goodness. Ah, it's, it's, okay, very good.
They dance on the aisles in this show, so it's, you know, it's pretty rowdy in there.
So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, council members, Port Authority Commission members, this is the next item, also LCDA grant resolution. But we thought this would be an opportunity to talk about the 700 American project and give you a little bit of an update and a little bit more meatier item. Hopefully not too meaty though. So again, refresher on where 700 American is. It's that parcel that the city owns near REI, that vacant space there, right next to Top Line Credit Union that is almost done with construction, maybe it's open soon. City owns that, we put an RFP out and give you a little history back in November. We closed that RFP and council directed us to enter negotiations with Schaefer Richardson as the developer. We worked quickly to kind of solidify it as a, that they are the name developer to do, lock in the qualified census tract because they would be seeking low-income housing tax credits. And it was going to lose their status, so we were able to lock that in. And we enter into a pre-development agreement. And then in our project timeline, we're in that kind of entitlement process, kind of refining of the project. And we'll kind of go into some of the details that have changed since the initial RFP. But as we start to kind of refine that and move into the next phase, we're looking at that funding aspect, that kind of critical piece, right? They're going for the low-income housing tax credits, but there's still a gap beyond that that we need to fill. So the original project, we anticipated 153 units with 5,000 square feet of commercial space. We anticipated that they'll apply for TIF, we still anticipate that, applying for the tax credits and other grant sources and reach out with the neighborhood. In that refining phase, we found that 153 units might have been a little too ambitious. We did some parking studies. We were hoping that REI would help by providing some space that we can maybe purchase for parking, knowing that that is the biggest constraint, but they weren't willing to negotiate. So parking needs to be onsite, knowing that there isn't any spillover into a neighborhood where vehicles can go. The parking study showed that we were deficient. We actually did two concepts, knowing that it would be a constraint, kind of 153 units and even a smaller sized building. And both were not sufficient enough. We'd have to build a second story of structured parking and then costs just balloon and the gap is, makes it unfeasible. So Schaefer has done a new plan that they're working on, that's 125 units. It would be senior affordable housing, which is identified as a need in our community. Would still have, maintain a small commercial space that would support that as well. They believe they can accommodate the parking that's needed for that. Staff was comfortable with this change because looking at other developments that have happened in the area, it's still sizable, it's still probably the densest that we've seen in that area in recent years. You can see here, 1801 American that we just talked about comes in at 55 units an acre. This will be 67 and a half units an acre, so still denser. There's the same, practically the same size site, but you're getting 25 more units. So that gives you a little perspective on why the 153 was a little tight to fit on the 1.85 acres. But it also fills that need where we talk about movement in the market and people are aging in place. And this gives them another option as knowing that it's an affordable option. I think many times people would like to move out of their single-family home, but just there isn't an affordable option for them to move. And this gives another opportunity for that, kind of creating that backfill where people can move in the market and move into the single-family home that's otherwise occupied by someone who maybe would rather move somewhere else. In talking with Met Council about this, they think it's, it meets their equity goals as well because senior is kind of one of their, the needed in the region. Similar goals, the LCDA, this is not competing with the other one. The other one is the TOD, the Transit-Oriented Development. This is a different program, so we're making sure we're not competing with ourselves on these grants. But again, they would be looking at doing things with sustainability, stormwater, creating that kind of public feel with enhanced landscaping, similar aspects to try and make it a better project. And of course, the affordable units would be in there as well. And so this really kind of fills the gap that we anticipate as we move forward in the project. And have any questions? Schaefer might be on the phone, they might not. They actually ended up having another public meeting that they needed to attend as well. So they're trying to juggle both meetings, but I can make a first attempt if you have any questions. Otherwise, you know, knowing that this is a little bit different than the RFP, this would be kind of showing your support for the grant application and the project moving forward as well.
Mike, I see Commissioner Peterson has a question.
Yeah, so one of the questions that came to mind when I, when you were talking was around the kind of affordability component. And could you refresh my memory, if I'm a senior who's on a fixed income, but I have some equity built up in my house, how does, how does the affordability calculation work in that situation versus the situation where maybe, you know, somebody is working, but maybe does, maybe is renting or something like that? I just, I was trying to remember how that worked.
That is a little bit different. Trying to remember now with how your assets are calculated versus, because, yeah, if you do.
You can come back, you can come back later too, you don't have to answer that, it's not a quiz, so.
My colleague, Jason Smith, help me here.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, commissioners, and council members, we definitely will get back to you on this, just to confirm. But when we did take a look at this on a previous development, we were informed that it's basically their income, what their, what their W-2 and what their tax returns state as far as their annual income in determination for the affordability. And so sometimes depending on how fast their assets could be depleted, depending on other expenses that individuals may have, the program most likely just focuses on what their annual income is.
Okay.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick follow-up question for you related to that. What qualifies someone as a senior in the case of that? Is it 55 plus, is it 60? What is the, what's the?
There are some distinctions, but usually 55 plus is that starting age.
Okay, thanks. And specifically to Commissioner Peterson's question, I assume that a reverse mortgage counts as income, but can you add that to the things you just check on to make sure we figure that out? Thank you very much.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm interested to understand how this change really fits with the RFP. Given the dramatic reduction in the commercial square footage, the reduction in the number of units, and switching to a senior facility, does it match the area and the original intent that we had intended when we put out the RFP for this particular lot?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Muah, yeah, it is very, it is very different. I think what, working closely with the developer, Schaefer Richardson, I think the end product here is what we would have seen from any developer. Knowing we had this ambition with the RFP and that is why we selected them. It was an iterative process, they did the parking study, they worked with REI, they kind of showed us the steps along the way that showed that, you know, any other project at 153 units probably is not going to work here without some sort of reduction. And just knowing the steps that they've done, this is kind of where they've landed. And just, I think that's where staff was comfortable, that they showed us that they were making their effort, they were making those attempts, they documented those study, this parking study. And working with our planning department, this is kind of where it ended up. It is a little bit different than what the vision was for that area, but at the same time, it's probably the highest, best use that we could have for that area. Otherwise, we're looking at putting another RFP out and what's going to happen is probably 125 units senior will be the most viable option that we can get out of that, knowing that they made that attempt and kind of landed here. So that's, even at 125 units, it's probably, from what we're hearing, is probably still ambitious. And it will be a four-story unit building with underground parking. So it's, it will be a substantial development, just maybe not as substantial as we initially thought.
Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, you had a slide earlier, because I was thinking the very thing that my colleague was thinking, you know. And then I thought about the history of this lot and how long it has been around the, around the bend here. And so I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about that history? Because there's some of us who haven't had that opportunity to see that. And then the other thing that I wanted you to mention after you're done doing that is you'd mentioned there might be a need for additional help to kind of get this over the, over the line here to get her done, so thank you.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lowman. So you're right, it does have a kind of storied past. This parcel was created because of American Boulevard, the widening of American Boulevard, created 700 and 900 American where Top Line Credit Union is. It was originally sold to Froun Chu Developer, and then they sold 900 to Top Line. And they were going to develop 700 into, I believe it was a 30,000 or 40,000 square foot office, medical dental office. That did not move forward, they ended up selling it back to the city. So then we did an RFP, it's like 2000, I'm blanking on the date, 2007? And at that time, that was the office development, it was 2007. So 2012 was another RFP. And after working on that for several years, Hy-Vee came along. But again, similar situation, they promised more. The development got smaller and smaller until eventually they didn't think it was feasible either. So this does seem to be a theme with this site, where we come in with grand ambitions and gets a little bit smaller and smaller until it doesn't come to fruition. So this is our kind of third attempt at this. And hopefully, we are able to overcome the gap, so hopefully the last, right? So they are pursuing low-income housing tax credit, so there are some hurdles still. They do need to get awarded that, that is competitive. That will be in January when they would apply for that. This grant helps fill that gap too. So if they don't get this grant, then there's other, they do have other grants that they are pursuing that they are aware of, that are kind of backup options. But they're hoping for this grant to kind of give that kind of solid moving forward because when this is awarded, then it kind of leads into that low-income housing tax credit and kind of gives you a better, you know, if you're funded, a better application for that credit process. And then there is, again, that TIF ask that would likely happen and we'll kind of analyze. And then there is again, that TIF ask that would likely happen and we'll kind of analyze what that gap is and determine what is sufficient to fill that if that is possible.
Well, Councilmember Lowman anticipated my question because I've remembered, we've, we've talked about this for a long time. And so I think, I think clearly there's been a lot of chances for the highest and best use to emerge. And this seems to be what has emerged and it's still a pretty good project. I mean, that's a lot of density and, and again, senior housing and things. So I, I think it's something we should be happy to have happening. No.
Yeah, these are independent senior, for independent seniors. Okay. And then where's the access? Is it the, where's the curb cut at? Is it, it's further west, off north and then back around, huh?
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioner Luns, still just the main access off of American Boulevard here. There is, that is where their easement is with REI. There is no easement access off of Lindale.
And the only other thing, I was just wondering what the thought patterns were on walkability, which I think are, are really important to seniors.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioner Luns. You can see it is pretty built up. It is pretty auto-oriented. But at the same time, there, there are wider sidewalks on American Boulevard. So it is, you know, safe and well-kept to get you to kind of that Penn American District, which is just outside a half mile. They are very close to being in that TOD zone. I think it's like right at the top line where it kind of cuts off. So there are some amenities in the area. It's, it's not perfect, albeit it's not next to a park right adjacent to it. But there is not too far, about a half mile in all directions is kind of where things are.
And actually Commissioner Luns anticipated my question because I was going to ask also about walkability considering the change in population that's going to be living there. And, and actually you might have as well because I was also thinking in terms of transit oriented, if it is, we, we can envision a scenario where low-income seniors might need direct access to transit. And I, I know we do have buses running up and down Lindale. We have buses on American Boulevard as well. But I also, I just want to make sure as we move forward with this, we keep that in front of mind, both the walkability and the transit access within that, within that area.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, that is a great point too. There is a transit stop right here that feeds directly into the orange line. That's kind of, Met Council's done a, a good job of making sure that they have these feeder lines that are kind of, we have a north, high-quality north-south and making sure that east-west can connect to it real easily. So it is, it is high frequency that goes there.
So Commissioner Hunt had a question.
I got a more comment. I, I wouldn't consider that area offhand. It is a walkable area. The other thing is, it's.
Commissioner, if you could turn your microphone on, please.
I kind of forget that all the time. The other thing, coming out of that site, and it's been a while since I've done that, but coming out of REI and that site and going east is horrendous at times. And you know, you're ideally, you're not going to put another stoplight there just because of the proximity to, to Lindale. But what does that do in the traffic studies for that volume of residential coming in there along with, you know, hockey and REI and it's, it's a congested area already.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, President Erickson, Commissioner Hunt, you are correct. It, it will add some traffic. The good news is residential tends to have a little bit different peak hours than retail traffic does. So you're, it'll be a little bit different. There is opportunity at some point potentially to add an access off of Lindale that could address some of that left turning. So you can turn right and then you'll have a signalized intersection there to get you to that left. So there, there are some options in the future if it does become an issue. But I think the initial studies have shown that it can handle the increase.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
I, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, what, what, um, what is the net benefit to the project going from a hundred and twenty-five units period to a hundred and twenty-five senior units? Like what does that do? Is there, are there grants that they can apply for that they otherwise wouldn't? Because I would think that you might need to increase your accessibility requirements here because of, of senior living. I mean, what, what's the trade-offs there? Can you help us out with that? Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, President Erickson, Councilman DeLisandro. The benefits are, one, it's a, it's a built-in market, you know, a high need, right? That seniors, we know, booming population or mean that. Car dependency is a little bit different because at some point you do get to an age where you're driving less. So the need for parking is less than just what we were originally proposing. Part of the issue with what we were originally proposing, we had large units which were driving a higher parking count. So that's why they did kind of a second option with lower units, smaller unit size. And it still was driving that because you tend to have roommates with two cars or, you know. So we have different parking standards and parking generation from a senior perspective. So those are the, kind of the two issues, your built-in market and that, that parking.
That's helpful. Thanks. Real quick follow-up if I may, Mr. Mayor. So are they coming back with development plans that do have consideration for a higher requirement for accessibility? I would assume also, for example, kind of to the point of Commissioner Hunt with transit, you'd want to have a larger space for like the Metro Transit, you know, mobility access buses and all that kind of stuff. Can you explain a little bit about the thoughts there? And if you can't, I get it. The developer's not here. That might.
Yep, they're working on their fit plan. I haven't seen it yet, but I think they're very close on that. They, they kind of have to have something ready for this grant. So, but that will be a consideration. Working with our planning department, that is something we're always looking at and pushing developers forward to have that connection, to have those considerations. But I, I think they're, they're very cognizant that you need those pickup and drop-off areas and you need to be able to have those connections and spaces for people onsite to just congregate and be outside because they might not be able to go, just senior in general might not be able to walk a long distance to get to a park. So having that onsite is something that we'll be pushing, yeah.
Right. And in fact, is that grant, is that grant going to include potentially like revamping the, the bus stop that's there so that there's like heaters and other things like that that allow for that? Do you know?
That could be a potential. I know Met Council or Metro Transit, they do have some standards around that that gets into some equity issues that they've got in trouble in the past. But when you do privately initiated enhancements, then the areas where more affluent tend to have a lot of that and then not, not. So there's some rules and guidelines that they have in place, but I think that's something we could approach Metro Transit about, yeah.
So this is an information-only item for the Port Authority. Council, unless there are other questions, I would look for a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing application and authorizing the execution of a grant agreement for the Livable Communities Demonstration Account Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to adopt the resolution on item three point two this evening. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just because of my late arrival, I will abstain from this even though I was prepared, but I didn't hear the entire presentation. So.
Thank you, Councilmember. So is there any additional questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and with Councilmember Nelson abstaining, pass is five zero. Thank you very much. Item three point three is a resolution approving the Bloomington Central Station TIF district extensions. Mr. Schmidt, good night. Good evening.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, City Council and Commissioners. Tonight before you is an item that was on the city's legislative policy this year. The city worked with McGuff Properties to extend the five-year TIF rule by an additional five years as well as to extend the duration limit of the Bloomington Central Station TIF district another five years out to December thirty-first of two thousand and forty-four. The five-year rule allows, requires development activity for a TIF district to be finished within that five-year period. And so because it's a multi-phase project, it's very difficult to always have all those multiple phases complete within five years. So any district that is multi-phase usually goes to the state legislature requesting this five-year deal. In addition, the extension of the TIF district is the ability to collect increment for TIF eligible expenses within that time period. And that extension was for five years, which was part of the city's policy this year. The requested action tonight just approves this legislative extension of the BCF district. It does not approve any future financial assistance towards any projects. Any financial assistance for future projects would need to be analyzed by staff and then presented before the boards for action and approval by you. Minnesota statute requires a majority vote of the City Council Port Authority as well as the Bloomington Public Schools and Hennepin County for this special law to become effective. And so tonight we are asking the City Council and Port Authority to take action on that as well as we will be forwarding resolutions to the Bloomington School District as well as Hennepin County for their action. Once, if all bodies do approve that, that information will be sent off to the state legislature for approval and basically enacting this special law. And so with that, I have two considerations for you for action and I am open for any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Council, any questions? I saw, I'll just ask the question. I saw the, the schematic that you just had up there. The especially letter I down at the bottom there, the future office. Are there, are there any, is there anything in the hopper? Or is there, there's just a lot of possibilities floating about is what I understand. Is that correct?
Mr. President, correct. We are currently.
He's the president.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President. Commissioner Bussey.
There you go. That works too.
I apologize for that. We are in discussions with McGuff right now with regards to their next phases on the north, so north of Carbon Thirty-One. Initially, the future office is just right now in their PDP planning with zoning and entitlement. They are in negotiations out there. It, it comes down to the market. We would love to see something happen there. And if it comes to fruition, we will be before this board presenting that.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you.
I just would like to make a historical comment. I mean, thirty years ago, or maybe more, when we started looking at this, if we could look at what's actually happened there and would have known that at the time, we would have probably said we're very, very happy with what has happened because this has been a tremendous amount of development and the housing and everything else. And McGuff has really been a very patient developer working with us. So it's something that I'm delighted that we have this opportunity to do.
Couldn't agree more, Mr. President. Every time I am out there with people who have not been there or have not been there in a while, they're absolutely stunned at the development and they had no idea that it even exists out there. So it's a well-kept secret. Council, any questions? Port, any questions? So Port actually gets to be involved in this one, but Council will go first. Council will go first. On item three point three, I look for a motion to adopt a resolution approving laws in Minnesota two thousand and twenty-three, Chapter sixty-four, Article eight, Section three relating to tax increment financing District one, aye.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to adopt the resolution attached to item three point three. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero.
And I would entertain a similar motion to adopt resolution, BPA twenty-three approving the laws of Minnesota two thousand and twenty-three, Chapter sixty-four, Article eight, Section three relating to tax increment financing District one, aye.
So moved.
Second.
We have, we have a motion made a seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero.
That brings us to item three point four, which I teased earlier. This is the public hearing that I was teasing earlier. This is item three point four. It's our public hearing regarding business subsidy agreement for SIC development and consideration of additional development agreements for SIC Phase Two. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. President, Commissioners, I am here before you to discuss and hopefully recommend for approval the agreements to start the process for Phase Two for SIC. Number of these agreements, Phase Two agreements that we have before you tonight is the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. We have a Phase Two Business Subsidy Agreement, a Structured Parking Lease Agreement, and then a sale and transfer of parcels. A number of these items have all, the process was started back in two thousand and nineteen, back when the City Council and the Port Authority considered action directing staff to start looking at the feasibility of drafting these agreements. In two thousand and twenty, October of two thousand and twenty, the City Council and the Port Authority did approve the development agreements and purchase agreement and ancillary agreements to move forward with all of the phases for SIC kind of entering in that motion. And with which in August of two thousand and twenty-two, Phase One did open. That's their logistics and production facility out within the South Loop area. And tonight we are before you, as stated, to consider the approval of the agreements for Phase Two based on the terms that were established in the prior agreements. So just to give a quick summary of what that executed development agreement did just as far as setting up this Phase Two. Within the development agreement, the city is to sell SIC, the Northeast and Southeast and Northwest parcels, so three different parcels there, for their phases. The port and city is planning to build a parking ramp as well as there is an adjustment to the land cost. The city is going to convey to the port the Southwest parcel to, to construct that parking ramp. And then the, the city and Port Authority committed to public funding for this project. And that funding was divided up between each phases, and I'll go get into that a little bit later in this presentation. The purchase price of the development to SIC is, was at a conglomerate of five million dollars. However, that was pro-rated per each parcel size as well as there was a reduction, a ten percent adjustment for in the Excel line consideration. Additionally, the Southeast parcel, parcel, which is Phase Two, the SIC had the option to exercise that and they did give notice within, over a month ago, that they wanted to move forward with purchasing that parcel and to start their construction entitlement process to begin the Phase Two project. So just quickly on the four phases, just to kind of hit on the summary. So as stated, their single-story production and logistics did open in two thousand and twenty-two. Tonight before you, they're looking to start their entitlement process for their headquarters, their office building, which will be on just south of the logistics space. Phase Three, they're projected out to two thousand and twenty-nine, which would be in addition to their production and logistics facility. And then Phase Four would be in addition, a second phase of the office building as well as additional production. It's kind of a history of the site of where it's located. The city, City Council as well as the Port Authority entertained, they purchased the interstate and the former Alpha Five parcels. And with that has create, basically we demoed those sites and created a buildable ready site. Phase One is currently constructed and open on that parcel, on the Northeast parcel. Phase Two, as we are talking about today, so just to the south is the projected office complex. And the Phase Two, where it's slated here on the Western parcel, the left-hand parcel, if you're looking at the screen, that is where the structured parking ramp would be built. Phase Three is that addition to the logistics place. That's just to the north there. And then Phase Four would be an extension on an additional parcel as well as an extension of their office complex on the south. And if warranted and needed, we would do a parking study, an expansion of the parking ramp. So talking about the parcels again, so there's the Northeast lot, which is Lot One. And that's where the current facility is located. That was opened in two thousand and twenty-two. The Southeast lot or Lot Four, that is the parcel with, where the office complex would be built and where SIC would be looking to purchase. The Southwest lot or Lot Three, that is the property with which the city will convey to the Port Authority for the Port Authority then to construct the parking ramp. And so as I just stated, Lot Four, SIC has exercised that option based on their purchase agreement. And they would like to go ahead and purchase that lot from the city. That sale price comes out to just over one point two million based on that prorata formula that I just stated as well as that reduction in costs. And just to, to let you know, back in October of two thousand and twenty, the City Council did approve an ordinance to convey the property for sale on this phased approach. So that's why there is no ordinance tonight. It's just done by the resolution. So that's why there is no ordinance tonight. It's just done by the resolution. And then also tonight, the city, we are looking for the city to convey Lot 3, that's the Southwest lot, to the port authority, with which then the port authority will construct the structured parking on that parcel for the phases of the SIC development. Public investment, there are two public investments here. We have the land price adjustment, which I had stated. And then lastly, the structured parking, that capital and maintenance fee. So right now, within the staff report, we are currently working with the architect on the design of that structured parking. Preliminary estimates for that parking ramp, all said and done, are running around $20 million. And so with that, funding for our land price adjustment and the structured parking would be coming from three sources: the Carlton TIF, the South Loop Development Fund, and then the Mall of America Administrative and Reserve Fund. This table has been updated as far as kind of breaking down our public investment summary. So as you can see, roughly right now, estimated price costs of $20 million for the structured parking, land write-down, right around $2.1 million. So the total maximum potential public assistance here in Phase 2 would be about right around 22 million, 22.1 million. All in, if you add in Phase 1 subsidy, we're at around 25.7 million. And then we kind of have a breakdown of the sources of where that funding is coming from. Like I stated, Carlton TIF, we will be using the remaining amount in Carlton TIF. That is a TIF district that is closed, and we're just waiting to use the remaining funds in that balance. Administrative and Reserve Fund will be around 11 million. And then 50% of the parking ramp will be paid with South Loop Development Funds. So wages, so right now, Phase 1 currently has 198 employees. Phase 2, existing employees or current employees that will be moving over to Phase 2 are 169 employees, with a projected increase of 75 plus more employees on there, so right around 247. So once combined, this area will have about 445 employees once Phase 2 is complete and open. Average wage for Phase 2 is right around 105,000, median wage right around 94,000. So well above the 175% minimum wage requirement within our business subsidy agreement. So just a quick outline on the four agreements with which we're looking for consideration tonight. The First Amendment to the Development Agreement, this is an agreement between SIC, the city, and the port. What this agreement is doing is just clarifying a couple of items within the previously approved development agreement. One of those is amending the inflation index for the parking ramp. Before, we were using the MIN dot highway construction cost index. Come to find out, when we were looking for it, that index is no longer used. And so, working with our engineers, as well as SIC, we came up that the next best index that is out there is the building cost index as it relates to the parking ramp. And then additionally, we're looking to amend Section 4.3. This is just the time period with which SIC has to build their Phase 2 project. They had requested that we extend this out three additional months, because they will be going through two winter periods. And just without knowing our winters, we wanted to add in that little buffer in security for them. The Business Subsidy Agreement, this agreement, once again, is between all three parties. Purpose of this is it defines the job retention and creation that is required for the public assistance with which the city and port authority would be considering for this project. As I stated, it's going to follow that public investment table that I just showed you. The retention and creation of 247 jobs are part of this subsidy agreement. And as stated, the required wage goal for this is that it needs to be at least 175% of the federal minimum wage, in which their wages are well above that. Another agreement that we're looking at for consideration tonight is the Structured Parking Lease and Management Agreement. This agreement is just between SIC and the port authority, as the port authority will be the one owning the parking ramp. This agreement lays out that the port authority will construct it and that SIC will be leasing it for their Phase 1 and 2, while also utilizing the surface parking lot on the Northwest parcel. Key points in this agreement kind of lay out the hours of operation. That SIC has it between their, exclusively for their business use, between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Off-hours, it is open, will be open for the public to park there. In addition, we will be looking at a shared maintenance agreement. This agreement will be coming most likely at the September port authority meeting for that, for consideration. And that agreement will outline that maintenance taxes, assessment, security, and utility costs are split 50% between SIC and the port authority. This Parking Lease and Management Agreement does lay that out. It does reference this shared maintenance agreement. As I stated, a quick claim deed will be required for the city to convey that Lot 3 to the port authority for the port authority to construct the structured parking. And then lastly, there is a warranty deed, and that is for, between city and SIC, for the exercise option for SIC to be able to purchase Lot 4 for their office complex. So as the mayor had stated, this is a public hearing for both boards. And so we would recommend that the mayor would open it as, in the public hearing, this president would open the public hearing, take any public testimony, and then close it. And then with that, I do have two motions for the board after that happens. But before opening the public hearing, I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Counsel, any questions? Clarifying questions, details you need more of from Mr. Schmidt this evening? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. So I know for many developments that have come before us, especially residential over in South Loop, we had talked about convertibility of parking structures for alternative uses, assuming, I don't know, self-driving cars are taking us everywhere we need to go. Are we anticipating this parking structure would be capable of that at some point? Is that, and is that, if it is, at all complicated by the shared use with SIC?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, Councilmember Martin, this ramp will not be converted, convertible. And I think the intention of that is that we're trying to build as least amount of parking as possible for the facility and also to allow for shared parking for future uses. So if, if at that point, parking demands do decrease, we would then have availability elsewhere on the lot to build another development, with which then they would be able to share that parking ramp.
Jason, with respect to that, I would think that if the ramp was constructed so that it was level in a sense, instead of having slopes, that you do have a lot more ability to take and use it for something else. I mean, floors or whatever. So I don't know what the particular type of construction, but it's something that I certainly would look at, just you would have an option maybe to convert a floor or two floors or whatever. The other thing I just wanted to do, get ready for our new councilperson. I think this project is probably one of the best examples of the philosophy that we've had in the port authority, and the city council has supported it, a very patient development, because we acquired this property from Interstate and without having really any idea of what we were going to do with it. But we said, this is too important an area to just take and let whatever's going to happen, happen. And so it was through a very intricate process, and it was also a process that I think, because of the port authority, and Tim Keller was on it for years in terms of participating in our, what was our body, the.
Federal Trade.
Federal Trade Zone, that they found out about this and then actively pursued it. And so, I mean, I think it's just, this whole project has just been a great example of how you can do things and look at it on a long-term basis, so.
Councilmember DeLisandro? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm sorry. Councilmember DeLisandro and then Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, no worry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is a question you can answer at this point, but I'm just, I am at a point in my view on these things as we get closer and closer to 2030, 2040, in terms of our development, that we were just, and maybe this is more for later in the program here, but since we're on our last item, we still, we still don't seem to have a consideration for our climate change initiatives. And the South Loop is a great example of a place where I'm not 100% sure 30 years from now how we are going to convert that entire thing to something that's a lot more sustainable. And so I'm just wondering if the port authority or the planning commission or who is thinking about that, that the SIC folk don't necessarily have to do it if we are not asking them to do it. But I do want to, I do want to kind of put out there that if we're talking about what comes down to like $7 a square foot of land that is now going to be steel and concrete, and if it's a parking ramp, that's even worse, what are we doing to offset those conditions? And do we, as a port authority and a city council, have a responsibility to be thinking about that in ways we weren't? Maybe thinking about that in 2015 or in 2020, in 2007, or whenever some of these projects started their long, patient journey towards development. So I don't know if there's an answer to this particular development or if the folks at SIC as they actually start to build this out can give us some insights into how they might do things. Seems like a manufacturing facility has a really big roof that could accommodate a lot of solar panels, for example, right? Or other things like that. Where are they in support of what we're trying to accomplish with our sustainability goals, knowing that commercial development and large buildings are the single number one greatest climate change problem we have in the city? I'm just curious if anybody's even talking about that, so. Maybe there's not an answer tonight, but I really think we need to do a different kind of thought process around that. Thanks.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember DeLisandro. And I won't put Jason on the spot to try and answer that question, because it's, it is a big question, and I think it's more of a statement than I think a policy discussion for the council to have longer term and the port authority as well. As we do this public subsidy of large projects, what requirements do we place on them? And how do we do it?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you, I would like the port authority, maybe this is the right statement, and you're right, it's more of a statement than an ask. I would like the port authority to care as much about our sustainability targets as it relates to transportation and commercial building development, which are the two biggest things that the port authority has influence over, against our sustainability targets. They're, you can go to our website, they're big, they're huge, everybody knows about them. They're the two biggest things. And this body, and I don't get to speak to this body more than once every seven months or so, so I'll take my win and then you can chastise me later. But, but we need to, this body needs to think about this together. It's not just for the city council. Thanks.
Jason?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, I can state during our conversations with regards to the design of the parking ramp and working with the officials from SIC, it was discussed with regards to, could there be an option down the line where we could potentially install solar panels on the parking ramp? There's additionally, new technology is coming out with regards to solar on screening. So that, those conversations were had. I'm not sure with regards to the design of their office complex, where they are with regards to sustainability on that front. But we have initially had those conversations with regards to the parking ramp. It is coming down to funding right now for us, as well as for SIC as to who would, would pay for that additional cost to do it. But just making sure that it is designed, that the parking ramp is designed. So if that, those funds were available, additional grants were available, that it is able to accept those types of advanced technologies on the ramp.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a question, but just to follow up on Councilmember DeLisandro's. We have a parking ramp not too far from there, over by a couple hotels that I was in recently when I went to Hazelwood and I plugged in my vehicle. Will there be EV charging spots in this?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, correct. There will be EV stations as part of the requirement within this ramp.
Okay, great. So tangential, just made me think of it. So can you go back to the slide with the employment? And we have a requirement for retention and new. And Phase 2 has 169 current employees. Are those all currently in Phase 1? Or are those employees that are over in the old Shakopee industrial area? Or where are those employees, I guess?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, they're located elsewhere within the metro.
In the metro, okay. So this would either be their other locations.
And savage.
Shakopee Savage, sorry. Sorry to my friends in Shakopee and Savage that I mixed you up. So, okay. Do we know anything more about the one that is in the old Shakopee industrial area? What's the status of that? Is that still open? Will it be open after this phase? Or is that not something we know?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, there are officials from SIC here, so I could maybe let them answer that question.
Okay.
As far as kind of their phasing of when they plan to move employees.
And do you want them to answer now, or do you want to? I'll defer to the mayor.
Why don't we, if you have another question, why don't we ask another question? Then we'll bring the six folks up, then we'll open the public hearing. How about that?
So my last item is, you know, Mayor, we have a public hearing here, but it's not a regular meeting, it's not all that. I would just ask that we report out to the public at our next regular meeting so that they know if we take any action here about what it was and why. I know this has been before the council and the city a number of times before. So I think this makes sense, but just want to make sure people are informed, because I think they engage more in those meetings than this meeting.
Agreed, and it will, it'll be part of the council meeting on Wednesday.
Great.
So I'm going to need bullet points. Thank you very much. And yes, we certainly will report out at our next council meeting. That's a, that's a good idea. Additional questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple here real quick. So I think I've seen it many a times, the maintenance agreement being 50%. Can you give me a little bit of history on that at all? In terms of, is that just standard, something we've seen? You know, is there a rationale behind that 50% kind of breakdown?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, the reason for that is based on the funding that 50% of this ramp, or over 50% of this ramp potentially, will be available for public use, because we are using South Loop Development Funds to help pay for 50% of the parking ramp. The rationale within the South Loop Development Funds and Julie Eddington, the ports general counsel can help me here if I state this wrong. But within the state statute, it limits how those funds can be used and they are to be used for public infrastructure purposes with which a parking ramp is. However, it can't go directly to a business, to subsidize a business. And so in this instance, we're using it 50% so that the facility is able to be used by the public as well. And because it is public, we are then sharing those maintenance costs across the board.
And we look at those parking lots, you know, the one that we will build there, how long is the lifespan of that facility there and about?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, it's well over, we're looking at at least over a 50-year lifespan of the parking ramp. Definitely depends on long-term maintenance and how well that is, that is undertaken.
And then finally, what would be the cost? I know my colleague here had asked the idea of the conversion. What would be the additional cost if we tried to have something that was built that was convertible? Do we know what that would be?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, that's something I can definitely talk to our architect on. I can definitely follow up a little bit further with regards to the convertibility of a level or two of the existing design. Definitely can do that in an update back to the commission and city council.
I think, given the interests that our council has shown around sustainability, I think a number of folks have brought that up, and I don't want to be careful. We really should be asking questions in this point in time. But I do think that'd be, I would really appreciate if we'd look at that in terms of trying to, as we're looking towards to, you know, make this something that can be utilized for an ongoing basis.
No additional council questions? Port, any? If not, then I understand we have our friends from SIC here. Maybe come up and answer the question regarding the employment? Is that what your question was, Councilmember?
Yeah.
Yes.
Taylor?
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
If you could identify yourself for the record and address that. If the council member needs to re-ask his question, if that would be helpful, or if you have anything else to add to the presentation, we'd be more than happy to hear it. Thanks.
My name is Christian Weisner. I'm CFO of SIC North America. I'm with the company for 17 years, joins SIC North America. I'm, um, with the company for 17 years, joined SIC North America six months ago. So I'm fairly new to, um, to the United States and the project. And with me is Taylor Letner.
Um, I'm Taylor Letner. I've been part of the project team since the beginning. Um, I've been with SIC for about six and a half years and I'm on the facilities team here in, in Minnesota.
Welcome. So, uh, council member Nelson, did you want to restate your question?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. So, um, I am just wondering, uh, there were already employees that were in the calculations. They're coming from different places. And, and candidly, I'm just wondering about the location in the old Shakopee, uh, industrial area. It's in my district. So just kind of wondering what your plans are for that area and, and, uh, looking forward to having you expand in the South Loop. But, um, yeah, just curious what's going on there.
Yeah, currently, uh, well, doesn't say. The, currently we have 100, uh, approximately 170 employees in, um, the, what we refer to the old Bloomington West facility. And the plan is to move, um, those employees o- over to our new campus in Bloomington.
And we do own that facility and plan to sell it once we move over into the, the phase two building.
I would actually, if, if I, I don't know.
Please.
I would actually, actually refer to your question about sustainability. The, the daughter of the founder of the company, of Dr. Avin SIC, um, she is very, uh, very, um, close to sustainability. So sustainability is very, very important to her. Uh, she used to be on the supervisory board of the SIC group. And so sustainability is something that we look into. We've already looked into, uh, the options that we have for campus phase one and two. Uh, what we currently do is we look into an option, uh, for, uh, drilling wells for geothermal, uh, because geothermal will be the prerequisite to go to net zero. We haven't made a decision upon that, uh, yet, but sustainability is definitely something that we would love to work, um, with you on, uh, in order to, maybe we can bring our facility down to net zero at some point in time.
Additional questions? Well, good, thank you for being here with us this evening. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
So if there's no further questions, uh, we will follow our recommended steps here. And, uh, I will open the public hearing for the city council to consider granting the business subsidies to SIC.
And I will open the public hearing for the port authority board to consider granting business subsidy to SIC.
Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to address item 3.4 on tonight's agenda? Matt, do we have anybody on the phone? Do we even have that set up this evening?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, we do, and we do not have anyone on the phone.
Last call for anybody in the council chambers? I see no one coming forward. So, uh, council, uh, for the city council, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing, item 3.4.
So moved.
Motion by council member Lowman, second by council member Muah to close the public hearing on item 3.4. No further council discussion on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0.
And for the port authority, I would entertain a similar motion.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lance, second by Commissioner Hunt. Any further discussion? Not all favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries 6-0.
Counsel, any additional comments, questions on this? Uh, I mean, I will, I will say this is very exciting. I, I was on the council when the Alpha properties were purchased and was excited, you know, with, went then, uh, as, as Bob said, that it was just a, an idea. It was on spec, it was just a possibility. And to see this, uh, moving forward now is, is just very exciting. Uh, it was exciting to open the, uh, phase one, equally exciting phase two, and just really looking forward to phases three and four. Um, I'll toddle on back in my later years and come back and enjoy the grand opening celebration that that will take place there. I'll be happy to do so. Uh, but I'm just very excited about this. So, council member Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say that I'm very supportive of this. Um, I do know that, uh, we'll be losing some good people in my district, uh, but it opens up a opportunity for other businesses to come in to that area. And, uh, the big thing that I'd like to say is I appreciate the port's focus and the council's focus on, uh, a strategy of supporting our hospitality industry and diversifying our economy. And this is an exact, um, uh, project that does that. It's, it's a great win for the community to have this continue to expand. And I know when we talked about phase one, you know, there was always like, well, there's phase two and phase three, you know, they're going to come and other, and it's happening. And, uh, so thank you to SIC for continuing that path. And, um, thank you to the port for supporting that. It's, uh, well, hopefully supporting that. So, uh, don't want to be presumptive, uh, but I, this, this project's great. It's, I think exactly what as a council member we've been looking at in terms of what we want to do for economic development.
Couldn't agree more, council member. There's no further, no further comments on this. Uh, for the city council, I would look for a resolution approving agreements with the port authority of the city of Bloomington and SIC Product and Competence Centers Americas LLC for phase two of a multi-phased project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Lowman, second by council member Muah to adopt the resolution associated with item 3.4 this evening. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0.
And I would entertain the s- similar motion for the port authority.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hunt, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Bussie. Any further discussion? Not all favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0.
Very good. I think, uh, Mr. President, that completes our.
I think we see a smiling Mr. Lowman. Does he have something he wants to add?
No, he, he wants to say goodbye, I think.
There you go, you read my mind.
He's going to move adjournment for the council.
The move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the council meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0.
Yeah, I will adjourn the port authority.
Very good. Thank you all tonight. Appreciate it.